All right, we're going to call it order. The work session for the Coaches County Board of Supervisors. Today is Monday, April 14th. You're meeting in the Board of Supervisors hearing room. Pursuant to ARS 38431.02H, public will have access to the meeting room 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion. Members of the Coaches County Board of Supervisors will attend either in person via or via Microsoft Teams. A member of the public may also attend this meeting via Microsoft Teams over the computer or mobile app. Work sessions are time for the county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors, and public comments will not be taken. We'll begin with a roll call. District one, Ms. Ms. District two.
Ms. Ms. Here.
District three, Aunt Sonora's here. All supervisors are present and in person. And we're going to begin this morning with our esteemed Treasurer, Ms. Traywick.
Here you are.
Here you are. We're going to discuss your budget here. Stacy going to discuss it?
We're waiting on some PDFs to come in for us.
Oh, okay.
But I'll leave it to Ms. Traywick to take it started. Okay. Well, I don't really have anything new to ask for. I want to pretty much stick with my current budget. I generally under spend my budget between 20 and 30%. I like to keep it where it is. I never blow it at the end of the year just to run through it. But I do like to make sure that if something catastrophic should happen, that I have the ability to take care of it. If I go to a fault, I will make people's hair fall out because I don't spend money unless I absolutely have to. And I do shop Amazon Prime because they are cheaper than one of our other providers. And so, yeah, I think my budget is good. And my personnel budget, I wish I had the people that went with the budget. We're currently trying to hire two account clerks. I have changed the admin position to a part-time position because we restructured a lot of the duties. And so that way, I don't need somebody to do my emails. Because if you've already read any of my emails, you know I do them myself. They're not always the most professional, but you know exactly what I'm thinking when I say it. So, yeah, I answer my own phones. I, you know, I don't really need a secretarial-type admin assistant. The person that we've just hired will be handling mostly our budget interactions with Stacy and just making sure that, you know, I've got my, what are those called? When?
Check amendments?
No. When I need to put out a thing.
Yeah. A record, P O?
P O. P O's.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's for sure.
Uh huh. Yeah. But I generally don't spend big money, so I don't have a lot of P O's either. So, yeah, that's where I'm at with my budget.
So, is there an automatic inflator based on the inflation rate that we add to her budget? Or is it the same dollar amount that she submitted?
So, we split personnel and operating budgets. Within those two categories for the whole department, we allow them to grow $5,000 each year. So, there is kind of an automatic inflator. But in our meetings, when we talk, we talk about, you know, if they are increasing their bottom line, you know, why? Is there a historical trend or costs going up? Have you gone over budget in certain categories? And is that where you're putting it? Things like that. So, Ms. Traywick is not requesting an increase to her bottom line in any way this year.
For people.
And so that comes a little bit later for us.
After we do the market analysis.
Right, after we do the market analysis. Ms. Traywick is actually carrying over approximately three years' worth of salary adjustments that she has not needed. I think mostly because you're understaffed.
Yes. You need it for, yeah, medicinal purposes would probably be more helpful because trying to get people in the door is just tough.
Yes.
What do you mean by that? What kind of people? Personnel?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I think the biggest problem, and it's more of a cultural change that occurred during COVID. It's really tough for people to want to come in and work. They also, I am really kind of crusty about people using their cellphones. And I do not allow people to log into ADP from any remote location. They have to be at their desk by 8:00. And I don't allow them access to their phone during the day. They have a desk phone. They can use their cellphone on break. I do have a policy that.
Wow.
Yeah. I'm old. And to me, my cellphone is my thing. I paid for it. And so, I don't give my number out to a lot of people as far as my personal cellphone. I still have a landline. Yes, that's how old I am. And to me, if you have, you know, issues with your family or whatever, they can call on this office phone. I have no problem with a personal phone call as long as you're not taking like three hours to talk about gossip or, you know, what your neighbor was wearing to church last week. I, yeah, I'm kind of hard about that.
So, you expect them to clock in and be at their desk today? That's really our thing for people.
It is. And so, we had one gentleman that, oh my gosh, he was brilliant and he caught on and he was doing a great job. But he couldn't be here by 8:30 on any day, any day. I mean, we cajoled him, we threatened him, we wrote him up, we advised him, we coddled him. We tried everything. And eventually, we did have to let him go because he just couldn't do it. And that is the biggest frustration. And I can't even tell you how many interviews that Maria and I have done with people. And one of the first questions they ask is, can I work remotely? And it's like, well, yeah, the Loomis truck is going to stop at your house every day with all the checks for everyone's taxes. Yep. It's a service job. We are considered essential. And during COVID, we were in the office every day with our masks, with our gloves, with the. And so, we are here. We have to be physically in the building to do our jobs. And that is a big, tough thing, especially with young people. And no offense to young people, sorry.
I have my call days.
No, you're fine.
Okay. Curious on what's the leasing here for operating leases and rentals for 5200 bucks on our budget? What is that for?
A pay check?
Free of seven?
Free of seven. We don't have any of the leases. In fact, we don't have any leases. I think that's our copiers.
Is that what that is?
Uh huh.
Oh, okay, okay. All right. I was trying to figure out what that was.
Hmm. Now, the only other thing that I have.
There's a separate line for office equipment lease. That's 5500. So, it says operating leases and rental 5200, and then office equipment, operating lease 5500.
So, this would be copy graphics right here? This one? And he's asking about the line above it, operating lease and rental?
You got a, like a storage place or something? You filing records at or something?
No.
No?
Yeah, without looking at it.
Yeah. Yeah. Sorry. I don't know where to.
I can look at my laptop so I can pull up my items.
Okay. The only other thing that we absolutely have no control over whatsoever is postage.
And it's either going to go up to, postage's going up to.
Eight cents or something.
Eight cents.
Yeah, it's like, why don't you just move it a dollar and leave us the heck alone for a couple of years? It's just.
That was when they went to, was it 73 cents? It was supposed to be for five years.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's what they said.
Kathy, I'm wondering if that's where we put our AQ2 license?
Oh, could be.
Yeah. Our AQ2 program for doing the batches?
It's a lease.
I mean, it's only 5200. It's in the noise. I'm just, I was just curious what it was, why we're leasing. If we could save $5200 by giving you a storage shed or something in the back here somewhere or something.
No, we have archives.
That's what I mean. That's why I was curious what that was for. Because I figured, you know, we should have room to store stuff. What do we lease and what rental and leasing?
And professional services, is that just like your?
Professional services is mostly our title searches. The people that do the maintenance on our safe and our vault. Well, Hardx, but we don't really do maintenance on it anymore. Yeah. But I can't think of anything, anything else we really put in there. The professional services, the biggest part is going to be that title searches. Because we do hundreds a year trying to get them back on the tax vaults.
And now, it looks like, like you said, it's just the same dollar amount, pretty much.
Yeah, we're not fancy. And one of the things that, you know, definitely is in my head too all the time is, it's my money too. I pay taxes. I don't want to pay more taxes. My favorite thing to tell people is, it's one pie. The more exemptions you have, the bigger the pieces for the people that don't have exemptions. It's one pie. You need a certain amount of money to run the services. And I don't get an employee discount even after 33 years. And, you know, so it's important to watch this, you know? Maria, she's got more vested time than I do as far as getting an employee just, you know, exemption there because, yeah, she's been here over half her life. Okay. A little team back. What did I spend money on that I don't remember? Because, you know, Maria brings me these batches down. She's like, hey, look at this. Guess what you've got work.
Is there anybody on three of seven still?
Uh huh.
Okay. How about just in the, in the middle of it where it says expense totals? Says 815,000 and then 1.4 million?
Yeah, that's what she's saying. She was budgeted 1.4 and she only spent 800K. Yeah?
I, you know, I mean.
Is that what that is?
Yeah.
And that's for the whole year? That's not like up to?
That was for, oh.
That's up to this point.
Yeah, that's up to this point.
Right now?
Yes.
But she got two months. She got two months left. She could go out and burn the other 600K if she had.
And that's my point. I just can't do it. And it just sounds evil, but I like to be sure too that if, say, something did happen. I know that I've been in hundreds of budget meetings now. If something happened that you needed to new budget somehow because you still have expenditure limit, but you need more budget for general fund or like IT, IT has, I mean, they have.
Roads?
I, maybe I might be generous about roads. If you can convince the mayor of Tombstone that my road does not need to look like a country path. But, no, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. I love Dusty. I think he likes to keep our roads named after him, Dusty. But.
He brings in dirt, doesn't he?
Oh, Lord, he does. Yeah, it was, it was great fun with the winds this weekend and the swirls and the, yeah. It was rose tree festivals. But I like to make sure that if you guys have to have a contribution, so to speak, from other budgets that I'm prepared to play too. You know, I work for the people of the county and we are on one team to try and get everything done. And it's hard, but, you know, nobody gets an easy pass on this big job. And your job's, your job, Joe's job.
It is a insurance kind of person, but it was.
5200 is AQ2? Okay.
What is it?
AQ2. They are, they're an electronic processing system so that I don't have to pay like $25,000 a year in lockbox fees. It's changed the entire dynamic of my office. We create batches of payments and run them through the system where they scan the actual document and the payment amount, and then they post to our T-Rock system and post out to the bank to be paid.
Yeah, so that's what the rentals were?
Lot of soccer ball in the league.
It's a subscription.
Yeah.
They're there for 28.
Oh, okay. Under the, like she said, the, all the different statutes that tell her where she can spend it.
And that's also a GASB directive to move subscription-based information technology agreements under an operating lease, and we actually have to amortize those out.
Okay.
Well, so at 2:00, they were going to hear from the guy who helps you with investments.
Yep. We will be here at 2:00. And we've got a 40-page PowerPoint for you. You will, you will understand the realm of what I do with everybody's money.
Just to give you the heads up, if you're going to talk to them beforehand, I'm looking for the statutes that restrict us.
Okay, there's only one. There is only one.
Expanding into more broader investment opportunities. Let's just put it that way. When you and I talked, you said you don't, you're not allowed to. When I was in the legislature, we granted the treasurer the authority at the state level. Doug Ducey at the time was the treasurer to invest in more what would be low to moderate-risk equities. There's a, you know, a lot of equities traders have breakdowns with risk assessments. And you could look them up. They have a little arrow with the green and the red. It tells you it's a low risk, a high risk, because it's stability of the equity versus instability and all that stuff. So, we said, you know, it was like 25% we gave him of the funds that he has parked for tax revenue or other fees or whatever that come in while he's waiting to disperse those. He was allowed to park them because they're able to be liquidated quickly if you need the money. So, unlike other things like certificates of deposit or some other types of bonds that are a little, take a little time to liquidate, it was nice having that money in equities. Plus, they generated more revenue.
They do. However, they're not as secure as safe. As safe, there is a possibility of loss. And the other thing that, and I don't mean this disrespectfully towards any of the legislators, however, these are the same people that want us to play in Bitcoin and take gold dust to pay for taxes. So, I don't necessarily take a whole lot of advice from them. I know that it's allowed to be.
Well, you made eight million bucks in one year.
Well, true, yeah. Right. And, all right, well, then to go to the other side.
I'm just saying, looking at options to generate revenue.
But it's like being frugal. I am very, very cautious. I will not lose principal. I will not. That is just scary. If I don't make as much off an investment, that's one thing. But if I lose the actual investment itself or any portion of it, that's devastating. So, well.
Oh, no.
And these are different policies.
Different worlds, different risks. This isn't, yeah. The risk, the risk aspect of it to me is minimal. I mean, I get, I get it, but there's equities that you can invest in that, like utilities, power that are very, very stable, generate significant.
I have been here 33 years. The only loss that the county has ever taken on an investment was through the local government investment pool. It was called New Century Financial Enterprises. And it was a AAA-rated bond. They went bankrupt. We are still collecting from Lehman Brothers and Sheraton Lehman, Credit Suisse. They were all rating agencies that gave them the AAA before they filed bankruptcy.
We saw the Big Short. Did you guys see the Big Short?
This is before the Big Short. This is like 1995, 96.
No, because the, these.
But we're talking $16 million.
Yeah, these companies.
For in the local government investment pool. So, I do still have money with the local government investment pool, but the pool that I'm in is agencies only because of the security.
And your interest revenue, can you just kind of, is that just something that you? I guess it's on five of seven? Can you just kind of tell me what that is? Is that just money you just have in there? Is that?
Definitely a tax return.
Yeah, it is. It's a portion of the, all of our investments. All of the money that I can get my hands on with the county is invested or operating funds. So, this is my portion of the pot for what my balance is in the general ledger. So.
$400.
And this is outside the general bunch.
Outside the general bunch.
Right. This is our taxpayer information.
Oh, yeah. And.
What is that?
Big return.
All the investments.
Oh, so this is like.
We.
So, what you don't have here is the net ratio.
Everything.
Should be nice to know, wouldn't it? They usually put a 10-year ratio.
What is that? Not contingency, but what is that big capital improvement fund that they have for IT? It's got a big balance, so it's a big chunk. So, like, say, out of my $200 million in investments, they have like 8%. So, when all this stuff is calculated out, every, when I get a coupon paid or interest comes in, it gets distributed out across all of the accounts. And so, IT will be getting 8% of the entire pot of interest that came in during that period.
When we'll be speaking, we were wondering why a big balance of money was just sitting there. And we were going to ask her, I forgot that you.
Yeah.
Was it the general?
No, it was something else, wasn't it? It was, it was the revenue.
The revenue from the sales tax of the jail.
Yeah.
Well, you also get property taxes twice a year, right? So, she gives, what's that?
Three times.
Three times a year? Only paid twice.
First half, second half, and if you pay by December 31st, she pays for the whole year. So, we get.
But I mean, so that big dump of money comes in, so she parks it until she disperses it.
I thought they said that they could do anything with the money and we couldn't invest it?
No, that's what we're doing.
And if it's non-investable, there are some things, especially grant funds, that are written in a certain way that agree through interest on it. We actually have to.
That's what it was.
We have to submit it back.
Some of them don't get.
Grant funds do not.
Oh, yeah, they're specifically marked as uninvestable.
Well, we set up a new general ledger account. The people, the fabulous people in finance actually provide us the documents to set it, set up the account, whether it'll receive interest or not. If it does receive interest, does it go back to that fund or does it go to another fund? Because, right, because.
I'm the president.
I'm the officer.
Were you the treasurer during these years with the big red letters for losses? This is PSPRS stats, earnings or losses. Were you the treasurer during those years?
No, I was not.
Okay.
I started in 2013.
But that's the trust, though. That's the, that's the.
Yeah.
PS, PSPRS. But it's the trust that.
I'm not, I'm not saying it's the county. I'm talking about the state. If you were going to put it in quote higher-yield things, like I'm sure PSPRS, they got a bunch of brainy people also.
Well, they're different. They're allowed to invest significantly in equities.
How it'll work out.
Yeah.
But again, Tom, I.
He's helping my sleep. It's all right.
No, he's not. But if you look at, if you look, he's not showing you the gains in the positive years that were double, double, high double-digit gains. He's only showing you the red. So, there's a lot of double-digit gains in there. Over time, let's just look at it. If you just invested in the S and P 500, which is what I do, right? You had spider funds. I grow significantly just doing that. I'm getting a 7%, 8% average over 20 years.
And that's the only thing that you get to do.
No, I do other things too, but I'm just saying. My safe spot is the S and P 500. That is my safe spot.
I am actually in mutual fund store. And when all of this fund stuff happened last week, I lost $20,000. And it's not like I have money shooting out my eyes. I do not have a high balance in my account, but because of the way the market was playing when the tariffs hit, I. I got.
You have a very low tolerance to risk.
I have to. I have to. This is not my money. This is everybody's money.
That's the problem with governments. They don't, they don't understand the.
All right.
Einstein says, Einstein says the most powerful force in the universe is compounding.
It's true.
Those key taxes. Right? So, but we've got to get, there is a way to generate revenue that we may not be fully taking opportunity as an opportunity. That's all I'm saying. So, that's why I'm looking forward to talking to this guy this afternoon.
Okay. Well, and I know he's going to enjoy talking to you.
Yeah.
But I did want to also put something in your head. This is something that happened several years ago when Royce Flora was the Miracopa County Treasurer. We had a huge change in the market. We had for years, for years, we were stuck at under 1% interest on just about anything. And all of a sudden, the market started picking up and it went to 2% and 3% that you could start really getting a decent return compared to what it had been. And Royce, being the brilliant soul with Russell as his chief deputy, went and said, hey, we will fund the entire treasurer's office by just the interest that we're earning off the money because I quadrupled it in one year. And it was like, dude, you have nothing to do with it. You had sound investments, but the market itself is what accelerated. It was not any strategy that you had. It was the growth. And then when it quit happening and quit doubling and jumping, it was like, ooh, that would have been great fun to run the Miracopa County Treasurer's office off at $3.12. So, I don't, there is that arrogance that goes along with, yeah, I'm doing so great. I will tell you, my ladder is very secure. I have a cash flow built in that I always have funds that come in during the periods that we need money to operate. It's not fancy, it's not flashy, but it's steady, reliable, and safe. And that, those are the biggest concerns to me. Making big money, I would love that, but.
We're not talking about making big money. I'm just saying that there's a major assess.
Percent compared to 4% or 5%. 4% or 5% is steady through and good money. However, 8%, you could be looking at doing losses. And I am, I'm a buy and hold girl. I do not trade back and forth, selling investments, buying new ones, selling them, buying them. I can't. I don't have the expertise for it. I, the people that actually do that for a living make hundreds of thousands of dollars a year.
And they blow it.
They make mistakes, sure.
I was going to say something like, when, when these PSPRS people came to all these municipalities in the, what, 70s or 80s? You think they said, oh, by the year 2025, you're going to be looking at 45% funding and you're going to be buried under $80 million in debt. Want to buy in? Would anybody have bought in? No.
Yeah.
But I'm sure that they didn't sell it like that, did they? You know, they said, this is going to solve all your problems. You just sign on the dotted line, everything's going to be okay.
And I think a lot of it really came even after that was in the 90s when I was in CPM classes. We had a lot of guys from the corrections officers and the sheriff's office because they were learning to be public managers, you know, get more experience for administration. And on top of it, that was when PSPRS came out with the 20 and out. Then the 20 and out, when it starts rotating, where you've got to go, our Tombstone City Marshal, he's a fine example. He started out with Sierra Vista Police Department. He was with the sheriff's office. He stays with each of them long enough to continue on with collecting another retirement. And then he became Tombstone Marshal. So, now it's like, wow, you know, he's got three separate retirements that are being paid to him through PSPRS. The 20 and out, I mean, I've been here 33 years. I would have a retirement and a half by now, not including my elected official one.
And when they're making double-digit gains, they're giving themselves colas.
Yeah. Yeah.
Which I'm sure didn't go down when they started making losses. They kept their colas, right? And they got whatever raises would come, they got those on top of the colas that they got when it was bad. I mean, when everybody's working, hardly anybody's taken out.
That's true.
You know, you're going to, however, we are now at the other end of that, with opposite situation. Hardly anybody's working and almost everybody's taken out. And I know that's us, that's not what we're looking at here. I was just saying, okay, this, this is the stock market. They got brainy people, like, because they're getting hundreds of thousands of dollars a year because there's another brain to know how to make investments and they.
And I'm not the brightest bulb in the box. I just definitely have a focal point for making sure that our money is safe, that we spend it responsibly, that, that's.
I respect that. I really do. I just really do.
Kathy, would you mind explaining the change that we made last year for the state deed?
The one where we finally made it legal?
Yes, yes, yeah. Pulled out of your operating budget last year, and I think um that's something that you guys um could benefit from.
And what is that, inherent?
It it's, um, you actually start on page one. It's broken apart into activity O two zero one, state deed auction proceeds. And then there's a reciprocal expense rate below it.
So what that entails is when you guys actually do the across the the counter sales or the tax deed auction, that money is supposed to come to my office. And then after the expenses are paid, um title searches, advertising, the the actual cost of the auction, those, those things are taken out of that pot, and then we redistribute the money to the entities that did not receive taxes. Um, for decades, um, it has not happened. And so we finally got this straightened around last year. Um, I have been squawking about it for a while, and and I finally found some people that would listen to me because it is in the statutes. That is exactly how the money is supposed to be handled. However, in the past, it was dumped in the general fund, and it's like, no. So here it is.
And what is that money go towards or?
Um, it actually goes to settling some of the the title searches, the advertising, certified mailing. Um, we also have a service sometimes. Um, we, the the real, real auction, is that what you guys?
Wait, is it public surplus?
Public surplus. Um, they have a fee that that they require for running the auction itself. And so those expenses would come off the top. Those, those get settled out. Then what's left of the money, the proceeds that actually comes in, we distribute it out based on the parcel number, the area code, the the breakdown of all the entities that never received taxes for those ten, twelve, twenty, thirty years. And we we distribute it out to the the districts that never received that income.
To the who? I'm sorry.
Districts, um, to the general fund. We all, I mean, it also.
It's like a tax bill. We break it down by the TDC, the tax distribution chart.
Okay.
Because we abate the taxes before we deem them to the state. So the taxes at that time are wiped out. So when they make money after they do the state deeds, then we get that back.
So it goes to the college district, it goes to the fire district, everybody that that lost out on those taxes gets a piece of that.
Yes. So we pulled that out of our operational budget last year.
So it used to go into the general fund?
Yeah, and 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 we have it accounted for.
I can see the problem with that.
Yeah, and activity now so that we can actually track it.
Surprise, the college district didn't sue us or something like that.
Yeah, my gosh.
Yeah. But but would public service charges you guys a fee? Public surplus charges a fee?
To put it online.
They charge, uh, buyer's premium too, so they're double dipping on both sides?
They are. They're providing a service to both people.
That's why I use GovE's, just saying, for my, my, I use GovE's for my my uh tax lien sale. Because the only money that they get is actually.
The buyer's.
The buyer fee.
Which, yeah, so that's.
I, that way I'm not spending anything out of my budget to pay them, just saying. I I'm frugal. I will show you.
I'll give you that. I'll give you that.
Every chance.
All right, well, I could, short and sweet, I mean.
This one's easy on me. And I can.
Lean and lean.
Huh, well, I'm not very lean myself, and I am kind of cranky sometimes.
Lean, no, you're you're you're, that's not a lot of money to run a office. So like I said, lean and lean, plus you only spent, like I said, eight hundred K. This is so far, this is so far. You're probably close to a million bucks by the end of the year.
Probably, well, I don't know, because, I mean, we we just got new.
Well, your salaries are coming out for the end of the year, so for you people and yourself.
Yeah.
So it'll, it'll push you up over.
But, you know, and and I think that's, that's been one of the blessings.
Unlike some other county offices that we will be discussing, who are in the.
The blessings that I have with with the board, I I've always been blessed with a really good relationship with you all.
Yeah.
And I I I know that you, by nature of my position, have to trust me. You know, as far as I've got all the money. I really, truly do.
And you can get in a lot of trouble, as you've seen, with someone next door.
And I, but.
But our finance department looks at our reports.
Yeah.
Like they're supposed to.
I I got, I got you. I'm just saying that it's a very high level of responsibility because you're dealing with millions and millions of dollars. There's temptation and issues that. No, 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 you, you, I'm not you. I'm talking about, we're talking about what happened to somebody else. Yeah, what I'm talking about next door.
The jail tax. There ain't no way I wanna go in that place.
A degree of, you know, confidence that that we have in our treasurer because she's doing the right thing.
But I have the same confidence in the board. I have never had a board fight me that, oh, well, we need to decrease.
Why would we fight you? You know, like I said, there there are other agencies that we are looking at a little with a little bit more scrutiny, but that'll be later on.
But I I like that you that you ask me questions and and you trust my responses. It's not like I would ever try and blow smoke or anything like that, but it it is. It's a symbiotic relationship, and it works well. And I I've been very, very fortunate. And so, yeah, this is, this is my last term. Mine and Maria's, we are heading out together. So you've got three more of these meetings with us.
We can't wait. It keeps saying one too many.
It's a personal.
Have you been training up, mentoring the replacement and everything?
Jesse. He wants to run, and he's been here six.
Oh, very. Wants to run for treasurer?
Yeah.
Uh, what's his name?
Jesse Valenzuela. He's he's a Eller School of Business graduate.
Good.
Um, he had, he works with my Brian on our data and IT stuff. So trying to get him more into the trenches part of understanding the statutes and the things like tax payments and and distributions and all that fun stuff, that's, that's where he's a little light. But as far as like operating in T-Rocks, our our operating, computer operating system or our credit card system, we we have actually been digging tunnels in lava for the last twelve years, trying to make sure that whoever comes after us doesn't inherit what we did. We want it clean and easy and walk out with our heads up and and doing the can-can through the parking lot because we wanna know that we left everything in the best shape that we possibly could. We're we're figuring it out. Old taxes.
She only spent four grand off the supplies.
Amazon's my buddy, and I get free shipping because I have Amazon Prime. So, yeah. Yeah, it it's it's almost embarrassing. We we look at the, we look.
But I mean, you you gotta be, lots of paper you gotta be using.
A lot of paper. That's where most of it goes.
I mean, I know my other gig, I go through four grand in paper a month. I I can't believe you, you know, you go.
We we just spent two thousand dollars on new printers, though. Yeah, and and it was funny because, no offense, Joe. Joe and I have had the best like brother-sister relationship for years now. Um, when the the board came down with the decision that we didn't need printers anymore, everything was going to go through the computer. And and it's like, well, I have people on the counter, I have people doing functions in the office that, seriously, you want them to jump up, run to a copier, try and sort out the pile during time season. Exactly. And and yay, my bro actually saw the the legitimacy behind what I'm saying. It wasn't like, well, too bad, so sad. That's what the board said. This is what you're going to do. And no, he he actually listened to why I thought that was a silly thing for for my listeners. And so, yeah, I I have lived along with the same crummy printers now for ten years. But, yeah, some of them. And so, yeah, we we got new ones finally, but two thousand dollars for eleven printers. You know, we are just that way.
Would you buy dot matrix printers?
They do now some of those over there, Steve.
Were they laser printers?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And you bought, they're like a hundred bucks a piece.
I I wasn't involved with those, so I'm not sure.
I mean, I just bought one for my house. It was like five hundred and thirty dollars for my own personal laser printer.
See, and I wouldn't have bought that.
One job or anything, you know? No, it's my, it's my house, my personal.
No, I know, I'm.
Cause I switched from from inkjet to laser, because I love laser. I won't, I won't buy nothing but laser printers. They're they're the tech. But I mean, they're not cheap. It's a, I bought a brother, but I'm like trying to, I'm sitting here thinking, she said she bought eleven for two grand.
And over two grand, yeah, it was one twenty-three or something.
I think so, yeah. Um, well, it it was due to the fabulous folks that that.
You got a heck of an volume discount or something.
I did. It was, it was a contract, a state contract. And they are HPs, they are laser printers, and Gabe did the shopping for me. And, yeah. So, yeah, it was like, okay. So I do spend money when I have to.
No, no, I got.
But when it's reasonable.
Like I said, there are other agencies that will be looking at it and may not have the same philosophy.
No, well, send them my way. I'll smack my wrist a little bit because, yeah. But once again, regardless of what department you work in, this is your money too. If you live in this county. You know, I I don't buy wine from Elgin because that's.
In Santa Cruz County.
I buy low carbs and um, I tie on some vineyards because they're local. I spend my money here as much as I possibly can, and that comes back to getting all the services we have. So, yes, I I, it's a global view of making sure that we continue to function well. And, yeah, if you, if you think that this is okay to just spend whatever you darn well please without thinking about it first, that that's your money too. That's your, your grandma, she lives next door, your, you know, your kids, when they go to school, you're spending that money that could be going to other things. Spend it wisely, you know? I mean, I won't say that I'm I'm as good at my home budget as I am at this one. But my dog, he's such a. And he and my cat would go out and get a job, then we could talk more thoroughly about this. Like, yeah. I even named them like normal people names so that they, I could put them on my taxes, but they just frown on it. They they won't give me a social form of them. I don't know.
She didn't come legally, then they would have got a social.
I'm probably getting a California driver's license or New Mexico.
Sneak him in. So my 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 dog's Hungarian, but he came in legally, so.
I got a puppy, yeah.
All right, this has been fun. Any any other uh?
I'm not.
Any other questions for the treasurer?
Does anyone ever say that?
What's that?
Budget meeting? I'm glad that's on a public.
Well, I mean, there's nothing, no, no disrespect, but you have a very simple philosophy and, I mean, there's nothing really complicated here.
She gets old star.
Yeah, it's, it's, all right, well, that's that's all we got. Next meeting will be in fifteen minutes. We're gonna be meeting with our public works guy, Jason Fosio, so we're adjourned until then. Thank you, everybody.